Welcome to the Russell County Board of Supervisors. August 18, 2020 at 6:00 p.m. This is a reconvening meeting. I'd like to first start off with road call in. We call it where in road cop? Tim Lulikes?
Here.
Glenn Wallace?
Here.
Carter Ray?
Here.
David Eaton?
Here.
Steve Breeden?
Here.
Horace Christian?
Right.
And Rebecca Dunn?
Here.
Ma'am, you have the board.
Thank you. All right, let's stand for invitation and make the name of the place, please. We thank you, God, for heaven day. Thank you for the many blessing you bestowed upon us. We pray to you, Father, that you will influence our decisions, our families, and friends, and the work we do today. You are a pillar of support. We need your support throughout the day by giving us the capacity to do as we will and we want. God, we need you to go back in all actions and decisions that we have made before us today. Let us be positive, allow wisdom, avoid any negativity, help us to do the deeds of our citizens of Russell County. And we thank you, God, for all the blessing you bestowed upon us in grace in our lives. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible, for living and justice brought.
All right, the first thing we need to do is to add a few items to our agenda. Steve?
I'd like to add, we have a resignation, she'll manage to come on down to meet the service. We have a letter in front of us, so I can add that resignation letter to the agenda.
Okay, um, that new business, um, member, where would you like first to put that? This new business, all right, this boss?
Uh, yes, ma'am, Chair. Um, I have a letter of support to Go Virginia. Um, it's a support for solar and battery electrification, uh, supply chain manufacturing hub. This is something that the county has been involved in for a matter of years, trying to work on, um, solar power and being able to accept that in the county. So this letter is to Go Virginia saying that we're a participant in that and we support it.
All right, that being said, do we have a motion to accept the agenda with these two new items? So move now, Chair. Who has a second?
Say it.
Who is saying?
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor for the new agenda? Uh, we need to do a road cop. So, let's see.
You don't want to do a road cop because it's open to the public.
Okay, well, we're...
When you're in there and you have the doors closed and they call, I think it's...
So, okay, all right. Just want to make sure we do it correctly. All right. All right, all those in favor for the new agenda?
Uh, uh.
Anyone opposed? All right. Okay, the first thing we have is our new business, and I guess Steve will be the resignation player.
Okay.
And I apologize, dear working person. I'm sorry.
Everybody has in front of them a letter of resignation. She'll manage to come on down to meet the service. It's founded that as the meetings are held during the day, and she works full time, it's not going to be a few due diligence there, probably going to be an absentee or so. She has resigned at her... I wasn't aware that they did during the day either, so I used to do something pretty good for anybody who works full time to try to end this meeting. So I'll make a motion, we accept this resignation letter.
I'll say it. All right. All those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed? That was just shared with the conference. We're ready to make a call. All right, the second thing we have is our letter of support.
Okay, um, at this time, I would like to make a motion that we send this letter of support. Um, does everyone have to send their packet? Uh, sorry, I didn't read to the public or attend our man.
Ma'am, I gave the next your copy as...
Okay. So everybody had it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Then at this time, I'll make a motion that this board be supportive of the Go Virginia Regional Council for Solar and that we send this letter into to signify our support thereof.
Who's got a second?
Say it.
Oh, is that all? Yeah, all right, thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Uh, uh.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll send the letter of support. All right, our next thing on the agenda is our citizens' comment period.
There was no comment here.
All right, if anyone here now wants to make a comment, attend our... Send in, we'll close the day up, constitutional officers. Send in, all right, our county attorney. Reports and requests.
Ma'am, Chair, the first thing that we'll need to do is to allow the PSA to do their road call, their meeting to order, so that we can hold this joint meeting as contemplated under my section.
I'll call the meeting board. Sorry, ma'am.
Do you want to do the road call there? Okay. And then you'll need to finalize your agenda before you move on to...
I'll make them check. I can still make them up? Is that on check?
We just need to change our...
I'm adding that to the agenda.
Yeah, I added to the agenda about...
Somebody else can make a motion if you want to. The motion is that my request was to add an executive station into old business to go into under 3711A, three acquisition of property, save a consultation with legal counsel to discuss some legal issues with the DQ regarding the finalization of the Castlewood Water and Sewer Authority, join your with Russell County PSA.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it, Dad.
I'm sorry?
Uh.
Who's in the pod?
All right, now, now I was sort of discussing it, it was in working with, trying to finalize the consolidation of Castlewood Water and Sewer, Russell County PSA. We're getting really close, hopefully, to closing all that out. And I don't have any documents for either entity to approve today. My office is still working with some legal issues with the DQ and trying to finalize that, so, but we do hope that we can get all of that ready. Hopefully, we'll, I'll be asking the board supervisors and the PSA to approve the final closing documents at your September meetings. But another issue that came up in trying to finalize the closing documents, specifically the transfer agreement with the understanding between the board supervisors and the PSA regarding the transfer of Ledge A to the Danesure Plant, which when the consolidation is finalized, the Russell County PSA will own. Lonzo has more of the specifics of that, but I wanted both boards to be able to discuss any concerns and to work out what the agreement would be so that I can more realize that what the understanding will be regarding that project. It's my understanding, it's my understanding that part of the agreement was, and again, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, because most of this I'm getting at the end of this, is that part of the agreement was for the Russell County PSA to take over ownership of the Danesure Treatment Plant. And it was the hopes that the board supervisors, that the Ledge A that they're currently paying to be treated, and I do apologize, I don't know any of the technical terms of art in regards to this, to be treated through that in order to achieve a savings to the county. And I know there are many concerns with, you know, how that would be done, and if it's not possible, and who would bear the cost of that, so, so, you know, again, that's my understanding of the agreement. And I guess Carter's still not here, and I know we discussed that there was some concern on that part, but that would need to be finalized, that would be an agreement.
Just to expand on a little, Colin Kay, the Danesure Treatment Plant is originally owned by the board supervisors. It is one of those projects that is not, was not under the Castlewood Water and Sewer Authority, nor was it under the Russell County. It was actually, it was an agreement that was between the board supervisors and Castlewood Water and Sewer. The board supervisors owned it, and the Water and Sewer had the agreement to operate it, and that was under an agreement. They operated and maintained it. There is about approximately 223 customers in that area that offered that revenue that was paid. The operating cost would come off of that to support those 223 customers and maintain that plant. Now, that VRA, which is, this one is owned by R and D, they wanted transfer to the new PSA, which is Water and Sewer, and that's the business that they're in. And being the previous owner of the PSA, I mean, of the Danesure Treatment Plant, board supervisors wanted an agreement with the Russell County Board, the Russell County PSA, that in the future that we had the opportunity to be able to run Ledge A through it if we had, you know, if it could be utilized in that capacity. Now, as far as that goes, as far as the testing, DEQ has not approved that yet, so we're still, we do not have it to defend the way of operations. Right now, currently, the Ledge A is being treated by the town of Lebanon. So we were trying to see if we could reduce the cost and move it into the Danesure Treatment Plant, which the county owns, which will be the PSA. And of course, they'd be compensated for treating that Ledge A and being able to maintain it. So again, the terminology in the agreement is pretty well much, we'll have to come to an agreement that we currently have with the Castlewood Water and Sewer, another agreement for the operations of the Danesure Treatment Plant with the new authority. Is that right, Kay? The approval sums it up. So that is the understanding, and we want the PSA, the new board, to understand that when we first tried to do on the agreement, the consolidation, we were trying to keep that carpet asset out. But R and D, which they own, they have a lot of money, they wanted it included with the VRA and the R and D for complete closure of all Water and Sewer under the new Russell County PSA, so...
And I guess part of the purpose again, when we first did the board supervisor, we thought we would be able to approve closing document, but also part of the closing is this operation agreement between the PSA and the board supervisors. And because there were some concerns brought to my attention, I just wanted to make sure that that would be a document that always ended with approval, what the understanding would be, how that would go. So this was a time, maybe there were any concerns or any issues with that that needed to be brought to my attention, so that they can be discussed and not further delay closing. If there's, if I just prepare a document and there's a concern with it, and I have to wait another month for a board meeting, so I don't know. I mean, I think, I think based on what information came to me, what Lonzo just said, the DEQ not having approved it yet, any agreement will have to say, subject to the DEQ approval, is that, you know...
Yes.
We don't have to holler at them, none have been...
No, no, this is just the operation agreement with the plan, so...
And it would be part of the documents, closing documents for the PSA?
It will be an agreement after the closing, or it could be part of the...
Yeah, it will be something to be approved all the time. It's not a, it's not a rate, was it document for closing? It's not part of the VRA and R and D needing for the agreement that needs to be settled in an open language that shall survive closing.
Yes, it is not part of the R and D, the VRA requirement. It's an agreement between the board supervisors and the Russell County Service Department.
And my understanding is that you, that the Russell County Board of Supervisors wouldn't incur the cost for the treatment and all that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If it, if there was a way that it would be a savings to the taxpayers for Russell County, I don't see, as long as it was approved by DEQ, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be a part of that.
Yes.
And I'll just say, and I spoke with Carter about this before, that we were having some discussions with R and D, VRA, just so we're... The only issue, and I think Carter suggested, Carter loved to use different language in there, that, you know, if for some reason that the treatment plant, that they need to handle all of it, and that the responsibility to treat it or dispose it would go back to the board supervisors. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that that's okay with both parties.
I don't think that would be, that would be important to be part of the agreement.
Yes, that's Carter requested that, there being something in there about that.
Now, we are working with Craig Ray, and that is our engineers at the landfill to do one more comprehensive test analysis of what we're doing. Again, it will depend upon what the approval of the DEQ. So this, anyone that runs a landfill knows one, this is for life number two. It's volatile, it changes based on what we're running through it, so you can't change from year to year. So we're waiting. That DEQ will be one of the biggest side effects, we'll be able to call this.
Well, I mean, so we really won't be so hard for any technical questions, or do you hear where you're getting, you tell us now when all the documents that kind of behavior, do you think we'll be able to do it next time? I hope so. I can't, I can't say this, I really do, but it's going to be a dog, that's going to be my goal, but it's still hard work, but it needs to be done, this is what we came up with last year. But I hope I have an operation agreement, and I'll just go ahead, basically, what Lonzo's going to do is some work template that's already in place between Castlewood and the board supervisors, go build in there, in language that, that give for some reason, you know, that this is all subject to approval of plan by DEQ program. And also that, and also that, you know, should present, should break reason that the plant not be able to properly treat or dispose of the Ledge A, that the responsibility would go back to the board supervisors. But other than that, the PSA agrees to treat that and to, and everything, part of the language to gather the deed that would be an operation to, to apply the order, retain all required permits related to that.
To get some clarity, would either board need to vote on a specific topic issue in regards to their acceptance to do that type, while we're jointly needing for...
If you want to do that, there'll be a formal, there'll be a formal document to approve, but again, I thought we were going to have a lot of other things to approve tonight, too. But if you want to do that just for your understanding, that way so we're not delaying, sometimes in negotiations, I'm going to draft a contract and say, well, they want that changed, so this is what I feel to clarify all of that, so we'll do, when I get the operation agreement, see understanding with both parties, I won't have to further delay any closing, so hopefully that can be...
I think we're all kind of looking here with, they look to see what kind of approach needs to be moved forward, towards a vote, do they need to vote in regards to that language that should be specified?
I mean, if they want to pass on, and I think that's helpful, that's, you know, subject to finalization of an operation agreement, the PSA does agree to undertake treatment of the county's Ledge A, we aren't there to give you a report instead of...
Right.
Instead of that at this time. But they, and again, this language is again in the documents that I've been working on, regular here the whole time, this was the first question I ever had on it. So that's what sort of stalled me a little bit, that, you know, that language. Again, they hold up, technically, when we all approved these transfer, the transfer agreement and the deed that had this language in December of last year. Rural Development requested that we change it, is what kind of started all this, and then we changed the language to suit VRA, and it was development. So I called Carter just to make sure that that was okay, that's what I concerned with, rather than... So that's what it became, so that's why I wanted to make sure that both of us were on the same page, have the same understanding, what's your reasons? But it does need to be something that's agreed to at a time of cluttering.
Chris, if I may, as far as the county trying to save money on the Ledge A, I agree with that and bidding it out. I come to work at the Lebanon West Water Treatment Plant. We get over a million gallons a year of this Ledge A. I don't have exact numbers with me. I can go and pull the numbers, Chris, Chris, I've got them for like the last 15 years. I think into the DEQ actually looks at the volume and the flow, that we need to wait and see what the recommendation is. Because the problem is, you don't get the Ledge A on a 70-degree day with no rain. You get it like we had this weekend, and they can haul five, six, seven loads a day. So the hydraulics is what the problem is. So from, as a PSA board member and as a wastewater operator, I would feel more comfortable if we waited to get DEQs. Before we proceeded and said anything in promotion, we let DEQ say, they thought the plant could handle it and go from there.
Well, that's where you kind of get an open discussion, and a little bit better understanding of those that don't know.
Right.
You know, but I appreciate that.
And I'm not trying to keep it with Cleveland, I mean, bid it out, because I mean, you know, we can get it better right for it, we have to do it, because it's all for the camp.
Well, nothing's really done until the contract signs, correct?
Yes, I mean, until you vote through the operation...
We have to vote and agree to it.
But the issue that we had prior to, unfortunately, this project changes daily for me, but the problem that we were pointing to have is that we had everything on track, closing would have been prior to any time the DEQ, DEQ approved it, so we would have needed to go ahead and have that understanding. And that's why, and uncomfortable legally, that any agreement say, subject to approval by DEQ, because obviously, if we do not get approval from DEQ, it doesn't, I mean, it's just not going to happen, so I think everybody understands that. But this delay may, we may be able to get your backwards, and it would be very helpful, I mean, I agree with you, but I don't know how long it will take for you to approve the construction.
Well, even with the terminology that's in it, we'd be able to proceed with the user agreement even upon approval of DEQ. I mean, that says it in it, I mean, it's not stopping, it won't slow it down. You still have the terminology to be able to make a decision if it's feasible, so, I mean, the operation is still the operation. Chris, do you understand?
Yes.
That part of it?
Yeah, I think, I mean, with, I mean, DEQ's got the ultimate say so.
Right.
And if they, with the testing done and the hydraulics and everything, if they give us a clean bill on it, I mean, we would have to try. But I think that we need, before we do anything concrete or that, I would like to have DEQ's listen to go forward.
Yeah, the county would want that, too.
Yeah, we're the one that can make it.
It's approval.
Legal counsel and county administrator might be able to bank for this, maybe even state of his experience, but we have an existing agreement for Russell County PSA to operate all the facilities of the county. So is this a separate for just the Danesure, or is this going to come under our normal operation agreement that the Russell County PSA already has with the county?
You won't have an operational agreement once you take ownership of it, it'll be yours.
Okay.
And the agreement is only with Danesure.
Okay.
That's a separate agreement, Castlewood.
No, I mean, I don't, I don't know, neither board wants to pass a generic, but I mean, again, I don't, I mean, unless, unless you all just want that clarification, like you said, I mean, there are still the agreements finalized, there's going to be nothing to, really, there's nothing to enforce until you get DEQ, like you said, everything is contingent upon that, but I mean, but I guess, I guess that's the way I would draft it, is what we talked about right now, so...
Would that help you?
Yes, I mean, I just needed to know where everybody stood on that, if the board supervisor was comfortable with language, that responsibility would revert back to them, if the treatment plant is unable to process it, and that, you know, the PSA had the understanding that upon being transferred to the Danesure Treatment Plant, this would be an obligation.
And all this hint is on the decision of DEQ, right?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, all this hint is upon what the DEQ said?
Yes, they have to approve it.
What this do is just help her on her paper. There's nothing to, to resign, to resign. If, they will find...
Can I ask you this question? Once all the documents... Once all the documents...
Um, not unless, not unless you want to, I mean, not unless there's other issues that we all need to talk about, I mean, you... They not hold it up, they may want to move their, to not get everything resolved, so we get all the closing documents, I said, from the A, they may want to do that just so they don't have to delay closing, so they want to approve it. But as far as, you know, unless there's other issues that need to be resolved between the two of us, I don't see another reason.
Will there be certain risks that will be required for this?
Lonzo will have to ask that. My understanding that there will be, because that was part of the language that I've had Lonzo request, that I put in, in the transfer agreements, that, that, that the two boards would jointly procure any licensing permits. Now, VRA and R and D did not like that language, and so we took that out, and just put in that the PSA will keep all the appropriate licenses for that. And they, they don't want any language that's sort of still tied with the board supervisors and the ownership, but they, they didn't have a problem per se with this in our operation agreement, what the understanding between the county and the PSA would be.
As Chris knows, in DEQ, R and D was simply, our current DEQ would be at down there at the time, on the Danesure Treatment Plant is valid, or that's a treatment plant. And per DEQ, if it had the capacity to change, it would be a modified permit. So it would be just a change in permit, it's not an addition, so, but it was still, that is different with DEQ, when DEQ approves, the Ledge A is approved through a permit.
What's the cost for that one, so, will we both pay for it or camp for it?
I will take care of the hundred dollars.
Okay, hundred dollars. What about, and we, you know, this all, what's this agreement signed, it's done. When, if DEQ says this plant will happen, okay, what happens if there's damage to the plant? Maybe something don't work right from the Ledge A, there's damage to the plant?
That could be part of the terminology in the covenants of the agreement to, that if it's due to, you know, any damages that's done to the Ledge A. But, and as Chris is correct, the landfill runs about a million gallons per year on the average, he is absolutely correct, based off of rainwater, rainfall, whatever we got through there. The model that we had discussed with DEQ concerning the Danesure Treatment Plant, you know, was holding facility contains before, you know, it was released back into there, it was diluted down a little bit more, 50,000, you know, gallon containers. Pull it off, and dilute it down into more groundwater, is basically what we're doing. So that's, that's something that we'll have to look at as part of that permit. So we do know that the facility is getting, has aged with it. We do know that. So, I mean, these only have a certain amount of life to them, so we do understand, you know, you can't invest a lot of capital money into it, as the age... into it as the age it is right now. So we were looking at the cost of the leachate and, you know, we'd have to go for the error or maybe come to a different agreement with the town eleven. I know that was made many years ago. But, you know, it's why it's beneficial to, you know, for the county, for Russell.
I just bringing that up, I mean, if there's any kind of limitation, that's part of the reason I wanted you all to talk with us. If there's any kind of specific limitation you want to put in the agreement that, that you would not be responsible for. I mean, that's something I need to know.
That would be something we would want to agree. And somebody had a question. You can hear, you can tell me better. Is there a way, would there be a way that we would know if the leachate caused the problem or something else?
Well, right hand, we were running the leachate through like the current existing agreement. We're responsible for all our drivers. We have them. Castlewood Water Service does not pay for anything that's based off that, what the board supervisors does. We maintain that based off revenue that came from the 223 customers.
But when it comes to us, it will be on us then, right?
No, it'll be, it would be, it would be the existing agreement. It's pretty well been. There is no cost to maintain. It's been set almost based off the revenue that you're pulling from those 223 customers pays to maintain that system.
And the other part of the agreement that, that we changed the language, again, the language that we changed in the, in the transfer agreement was more generic, which you all agreed here in the operation agreement, tried to take out some of the specific language that made, that ruled, basically, they just get, it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, important for their transaction. So they didn't think it belonged there. But another, another understanding that was put in there is that the board would vote, be involved in the hiring of employees. And I think I should have done it before, but I just want to make sure that's, is that still going to be the understanding going forward is both the board would be involved in the hiring of employees for the sewer treatment plan.
That is totally the board supervisors' discretion.
That was part of the initial agreement, which we had changed.
My understanding, if we've been discussing this, that we would almost be divesting ourselves of the responsibility of that. So therefore, we would not be in the hiring business to somebody who's running. But that would be the P S A sole responsibility. We just want to, we just want to divest our way of shit.
I would suggest that Lonzo, Harvey and Carter give somebody start looking at this modified agreement, revised operation. Just start to talk about this work through these issues. I mean, it's probably going to be another month or two. So I think before these issues are resolved.
I like that idea. I think.
We just need the board to write me on top of that.
Look through it and digest it to the fact where it makes sense for both, well, it makes sense for the whole, all the residents of Russell County. And I think you're going to need some sort of agreement with the town eleven. You don't want to cut bait with them and not have that relationship to be able to continue with, you know, and I think it should be negotiable. They don't want to probably lose the opportunity to take it if they are making some money.
We'll get it, Chris, right now.
I'm not going to, if Chris tried to win.
Yeah. And I know that these agreements were made years ago with the town eleven. And we have a great partnership with it and they do a great job with it. But, you know, again, you know, with COVID and the rest and the age of the sewer treatment plan, all we got, you know, this is an opportunity to take a look at not just our thing, but maybe the town eleven's agreement. Probably willing to.
No, I mean, I totally agree. If we can save money.
Yes. Well, I think it all, it all really goes into one pot. It's all for the all the residents of Russell County.
Right.
Exactly.
If we can save money and work and partner together, I think it's a no brainer. Figure out the most simplistic way to make everything work. But I think you all were fewing it amongst Steve. I think that makes a lot of sense. It's a lot to digest.
Madam Chair, if I may, just make a statement. I do want to make sure that this sewer treatment plant, which is taking care of 220 some customers that have been solidly taken care of over the years. This was a needed piece of infrastructure for clean water and to help this community and these communities that I represent. So I want to make it perfectly clear that we need to be thinking about the community of the Dan, the Dan community and further on so that we can continue to work on work quality improvement throughout our county, but especially in the need, needed areas that I happen to represent. And so the expense of this plant has been borne on the backs of my constituents. And I want to make sure that we're not only saving money for the county, but we're taking care of those folks who have been paying for this plant all these years. And to make sure that they're taken care of and we're equal, that can come onto a new system as possible and have that opportunity also. Thank you.
Taxpayers.
There, I mean, you don't get the same.
I'll just make a note that the county's been subsidized and sewer system ever since it was built. The team probably in the neighborhood of 120, anywhere from 129, $100,000. I mean, it's right there in the records, white and plenty. So, you know, I think any, any consolidation in your last rate adjustment actually lowered rates in the Dan, your water, your sewer. I think, be fair, it's the other taxpayers of Russell.
And just before the, and board supervisors move on with the rest of this short agenda, the P S A takes up their regular meeting, I think they're going to make a motion to re-say us, let you all conclude your meeting and finish their business.
Make the motion. Make that, that's safe. All right.
You're welcome to stay.
Madam Chair, we will move on to Eric.
Yes, ma'am.
County administrator reports requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. The county administrator reports are first of all, and the reports is, I just want to go briefly touch on the home acre Castlewood, the home acre in Castlewood canneries. We have. As everyone knows, it would be trying to, board supervisors, county administrator must have been, we've been searching all over the United States trying to get and find cans and being able to get and put the cannerie. Now we're down to look at, you know, try to even look at some of the jars. We wanted to make sure that these cans that we have, which is currently is fitted for the bulk cans only. And one of the things that bulk can corporation since the COVID has hit, it is, actually has went out in the canning business and they have sold some of their stuff to Berlin and some of the other American and Dixie and the other stuff. So we have contacted every, every manufacturer that will, that has specs that will fit our canner. Now, we've also met with the cannering committee and J D Cook and tried to find different plates through Dixie to be able to do another set of cans. But in the meantime, we are working with, we have ordered through Berlin to try to get a similar can, which is best as the cans that we have, test them to be able to know that these will work before we give them to the public. We've got to make sure they meet the safety concerns, the USDA concerns, the pressure concerns on some of these ones that we've got. So we got to talk with Berlin, we've talked with Dixie, and we put an order in for them. As everyone can see, it says currently only having stock and available due to the increased demand post by COVID-19. We expect the lead times are averaging five to 10 weeks. That's, no matter what you're buying, that's it. So we have checked. So we went with Berlin, we went with Dixie, and also we have, we have contacted all these other places trying to also get jars and cans in the list that's up here. There's about 14 or 15 other additional companies that we're looking at. And we are on the list. If anything comes available, we're trying to do it. Rebecca and Carl and K D and I met and looked at what we can retrofit with the tobacco grant, get the new plates in if we have to do it, if the other ones don't test, to be able to go to, Carl, I think he said, what, Atlanta, Georgia? That's where we got them to. Was that, was it Atlanta? Yeah, Atlanta, Georgia. So we got, we had to take them ourselves and have the plates refitted. And so right now, the place that we have is profiled, it's not, they're not universal. You can't just put any teen can in there because it won't hold the pressure. It won't, it won't fit the can. It won't seal the can correctly and be, you know, stainless. One is the safety issue. Second is it wouldn't last with the canning, with materials that goes in the can because the seals will not go. But I just wanted to give the board an update that we're going to continue to try to get the cans for, for the canneries. And we've even, you know, even looking at some of the jar offices. So, next on county administrator reports or requests is, was on, the last one is Russell County Business Center. So I'll let Mr. Brady talk about that. Gee, thanks.
We, in fact, I got a call from Tony last night. They're in the process of getting ready to open their facility. If you want to know, we want six of the bikes and some of the freeways. I think that's about all they're going to require. And we did have a meeting. We met Lonzo and I and Tony and Shane, Farmer, Gavin, the leadership, the town manager, Carl Brown, our insurer. And I don't think Carl was too happy with facilities. I don't know. It seemed like you commented, you want to, there was always a reason why it wouldn't want to work.
Well, the town eleven building, it's a beautiful facility and it has pools and water parks. But it did, based off the current space of what they've got more fitness center along with the other things that they're providing with the pools and the community centers, basketball courts, it, it doesn't have enough room to accommodate all the equipment in the freeways and the universals and, and do the aerobic classes and the, the individual training classes. So the space that we have both, they just did not have it in new construction. So you would have to pick and choose on what they wanted. And I think Mayor of Cleveland County, though he gets, like Steve had said, they wanted some of the freeways and the,
They're side concentrating more on cardio, basket, heavy weights. They felt like having the heavy weights would put them in competition with Lonzo, weight facilities, crap.
Their brain is in perspective, recent fitness center is considered for the town eleven, not just because they built the new facilities. We are currently moving Virginia Department of Health in here. And part of that move, we have to move the extension offices down to the lower end. So we're moving them around. You have Virginia Department of Health, which is bringing their complete planning in and their executive staff that's coming in, environmental health and all the programs throughout. And they're going to be taking about as much room as the Department of Social Services is. So we need the additional room down there for that. So in, in the co-op, the extension center, Virginia Tech needs the additional space down there. If we, based off of the outfield or field in here, there would only be enough square footage left for a very small space, which would not accommodate, you know, the rowies, the loud noise in the business. And so you're going to kind of be, you're going to kind of be putting both yet.
Well, I think my position is now that the space, we have to have the space for the health department. All we're going to have left probably is have one little front room there, which is not adequate to do all the places. One thing that the town has done, I thought they were going to charge for the classes, but the classes that they have are going to be a part of the overall fee. There'll be no additional charging. So I think that's kind of like an added extra.
It's like an extra.
And, and talking to Tony, he said they're going to do classes. They're in the process of trying to talk instructors and see who's going to do what, you know, trying to work all that out. But I think what we probably need to do is allow lines that will be scheduled close. Who else fits and coordinate, you know, as far as the equipment, I don't think fans can take that equipment. They said they'd like six of those bikes, which leaves five of those spin lines with over the distributed throughout in the other areas, like some of the other board members.
It'd be nice to utilize some of that in some signatures that's in that we have in the area. Take a bike or one of your bikes or one bike at each location throughout pro county. And let some seniors utilize them or die or pull rack or beams and stuff. Some of the trail meals or what? How many did you say you had today?
Which one?
The trail meals.
Uh, one tree.
One tree.
One, one last trail.
Oh, okay.
I think probably just need to, I don't want to have it sink users' bikes. Probably just, you know, you probably need to take the exercise with whatever weight machines anybody wants, simple locations.
Yeah, there's love. You know, you're going to ask them, would they be interested? Just ask them, would they be interested in a bike?
It's like me, having a bike, you know, I'm interested at the get-go. When I'm on exercise bike, I look down at that mile meter and it says you can ridden five miles. And I think, like, if my heart beats by now.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? I just kind of like to know maybe for next meeting that we have a report on how much the business center has cost us over time and the equipment that's been put in there that we bought extra. And to see where that, see where we are with that, I'd like to see a report on that. Unless you have something you can pull out of your computer now. But anyway, I'd like to, I'd like to see about that. And should we be divesting it to our communities? And I know I said that last time. And I think that our community centers could possibly use something like that. I think it's only fair. But there's going to be a lot of equipment that probably might not be needed. So we might see about how we can divest that to other companies or something here to at least recoup some of their dollars that we can spend on this.
Lonzo, you've probably got records of how much money we spent originally. Go back.
Yes, yes, I got a list of equipment. We've done a little inventory. I've got the original.
I, I track the revenues and the expenses coming in and out on a monthly basis. We're about $18,000 for good over the life of the facility itself. That doesn't include utilities, the things that are just kind of built into the government.
I can get.
More of that initial capital cost.
I'll go back through and have my staff with records, move what we expended on the equipment. Now, the couple of things, if. Now, the couple of things, if they also, the, the companies, we've also had requests from the sheriffs and the schools, if you, if you do get rid of, or if you have extra equipment, they would like to have, you know, some kind of, you know, option in this. So if you do between the community centers, and they look at the big universals, and some of the high schools and football programs, you know, y'all can spread it between that. So there's some options. I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll give you a list of the equipment that's existing in the town, and I'll send it out to all the board members, and that way they can look at what they've missed, you know, the beginning whatevers left over that either the sheriffs or the schools, who was one whatevers, that could not be utilized.
Why don't you reach out to them, let them put a proposal back into the board and see what they're making, what they're interested in?
Yeah, and, and they would be, but they'd be interested. If I asked, I asked the sheriffs department, what they'd pull, they'd take the whole center. They'd take the whole center. Because they're looking for a place to train, so if y'all are looking at a place to go to big community centers, or looking for the high schools, or football programs, you know, y'all choose that, so I'll give you the list. Y'all tell me where it's, and I will. Second thing is, you need to close it. And I mean, as far as scheduling down, the board will have to give, you know, a formal motion date to move on that. This will be closed, I don't know, November 3rd, October, or September, or whatever the date is. So this is August the 18th, so to give ample time for the instructors, and that way we get.
End of September.
End of September, is that?
What's your recommendation? Yes, please.
I would say, let's say the end of September, and it gives full month.
Yeah, that'd probably be wise, kind of that way, if we could look at moving the equipment and getting it out. Right now, actually, we have builders coming in to do the roads, while they're trying to do it down, we had moved some of the equipment already down, they're wanting to start.
I'd ask you to call either Kevin or Tony or Shane, probably coordinate, you know, any, whatever equipment they need. But it's, it's made pretty minimal what they're asking. After they, after they get that, then you can, then you'll be able to have an inventory that everybody else is looking at.
All right, so Steve, you're going to make that your motion?
I will make the motion if we close the fitness center down, the end of September.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Lou, all those in favor?
Uh.
All right. Okay, with that being said, I'll just go after him. If we're, if we're being a small space, but if we have a business that's interested in renting it at the same cost that the others are renting that space, I think we need to look at that. We don't need to be giving it away, because we need to get it paid for and have a business, a full business, we don't need to have, give it to a governmental entity and not charge anything. I'm going to be greedy about that, but I think we need to, if we can rent at the same cost that anybody else is, we need to rent it out.
And share.
It's not, it's big enough, you know?
Or even bad, it's probably already got rented.
Oh, great, okay, good, let's rent it.
Prostep, you know, and he said, he said, I had requests, I'd probably rent it just to meet, you know, the damn good business relations.
Yeah, renovation's got to be completed first.
Well, I just, I think, if we can have a business to help pay for, to pay the building off, and not put that kind of tax payers, we can, that's what I'm going to suggest.
Absolutely.
Yeah, good.
Absolutely. The, the, part of the instruction, like I said, the extension officer, the extension offices from Virginia Tech and the rest, we're moving down to the lower end with the fitness center, is the BDA's will pay for, for force development board, plus part of our, we're giving that part of our space too, so it just not the fitness center is having to, you know, accommodate this, but it's also the county, we're losing all of our storage space down in the lower end because of additional build, they're, they're taking that space too. So we're going to have to look for additional space. So we're moving some out to the, the other, Sally Dock Pores out here, we're moving some to the Cleveland School, the other locations that we have. So it's not just fitness center that is affected by this, it's also the county and our spaces, and also the other, what's, remember, it's the storage down in the lower end, it's, it's got the commissioner revenue, the secretary, the treasurer in, it's got the co-ops, it's got the M and B in there, it, it has a lot of storage that's down there, so we're kind of, everybody's affected by this move to be able to accommodate it, but it, again, like this guy had pointed out, this, this will help pay for this building. So what rent comes from it is contributed to the debt pay on this building, so. Any more questions on the fitness center, or any comment? The request for the, next was the, on the request is Russell County Care's grant application form.
I'll speak to that because Tim and I met this afternoon, we did receive some grants that were, or some loan applications that's come in thus far, that were business loans, and we need to complete this grant application process. They have to come in and fill out the rest of it, which is the payers required. It's a couple of pages that they just need to attach with each one of their loans that they've got. So I want the public to please, let us know, let it be known, the entire county, if there are, this grant is out there, if you have suffered any loss through COVID, we want to compare loans with what the towns have given, because we can't double-dip, we can't receive theirs and then from the town too. So we need to get the towns and see what applications they have done thus far. We will continue with this, and with that being said, we are working as soon as we can get with the towns and compare notes with what they've gotten. We have reviewed them, and we do want all their folks in the county, from Dan, Castlewood, Leavenon, Belfast, Swords Creek, Hanover, we want the entire county to have an opportunity to apply for some of this grant payment.
So for clarification, is there another, is there going to be another round of money coming from the IDA?
No, the IDA, they just, they have done applications, and now they have given it to us to review, but there's a step that they didn't do. There has to be a payers application, which is part of that payer package that we have to look at to meet their qualifications.
So that's totally separate from what has?
That's what we can see in payers' office, and those are the things that we can see in payers' office.
Okay, so, so I can get this out into my little community and a restaurant and eat shop, and those are the steps you can get and closer shop?
And there is the application, it's in the back, and then here is the payer's application grant that has to go to all the applications. And once they fill that out, and we'll continue with what IDA draws and any other grants that are out there, any other applications that are out there that we need to look at. So we've started, and I believe it says through September 3rd, or until plans are allocated in this program. So we will, we will take them off, but we give them to us. And I need the ones that IDA draws, need to add this, and Lonzo said he would come on, and let him know that this part has to be added, also what he has done.
Does applications come through the county here?
Applications come through you.
First.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And here, David, if you'll look, all of these is back here in the back.
Right, I got it. Yep.
And we'll add it with the ones that IDA draws to us, and for anybody else that needs, that did have an opportunity to do an application, we want them to hear it and come get them. And it should be posted on our webpage.
Okay, that's what's going to happen.
Is it posted on wisdom?
I can't post it till y'all prove this. So Katie, don't let me do that. So if, if the board supervisors is good with the board, I'll make the motion to approve.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That was great.
I'm going to fizzle them.
And Steve, you second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed?
Who made the motion? I did.
David did, and Steve seconded.
Steve seconded. Okay, just a little bit more on the application form that y'all approved. We will be putting this up on the county website, and this is a notice of all of Russell County businesses. We have that list of all the businesses that does, all the little businesses that do business in Russell County, and we want to be able to give them an opportunity to take advantage of what we're trying to provide for them, to continue doing business in Russell County. We will also have it on Facebook or Twitter accounts. You will have a hard application that's only, that you can pick up in our offices or website. And in addition to that, we can also, will be creating notices in the Leavenon paper that this is available to businesses within Russell County that have been affected by the COVID incident. So it, it gives us an opportunity to, you know, help out the businesses within Russell County during this time. We know it's been a hard time, it's, it's, we're in the, we're from the upper three percentiles into the double digits, so this will give an opportunity to, for the business to be able to have a little bit of assistance from the Russell County Board Supervisors to be able to continue to do business in Russell County. So any more questions, comments on, on the CARES Act grant application form? If that, I'll proceed into the Russell County IDA, this and the IGO letter of support. This is part of the request that was made during the last board meeting, this is pretty quick, this was fast, the, for both this letter of support and the next letter of support with, is with Cumberland Plateau Planning District and Point Broadband letter of support for additional IT projects within the county. I would like to read the ones with IGO and the latter. The IGO is, this is letter of support to the Department, Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, this is through the grant. The, we are writing there to express our support for the grant loan application for the Development Authority of Russell County. Virginia IDA is submitted to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development DCD for the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative 2020 grant. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, it is essential that our community and economic development partner with the IGO Technology and IDA provide broadband projects to extend fiber optic internet services to the crossroads, slash per cell sections of Hansville and East, New Garden, Fort Feeny, and the area near Hanover located with the Russell County. Projects with the French Bend is benefiting to the residents located with these local counties to provide gigabit broadband capabilities with fiber to the premises architecture. That's, that is part of the IDA and the IGO. Now, the Cumberland Plateau letter of support.
You want to, you want to stop here? You want us to go ahead and do a motion for this?
Yes, ma'am.
For the Russell County IDA?
And the IGO.
Yeah, so we have a motion to send this letter of support.
So.
Tim, you have a second?
Second.
Paul, are all those in favor, letter of support?
Uh. Madam Chair, I'll need to abstain, but my attorney has advised me to abstain because of my business relationship.
Okay, all right, David, thank you. Okay, you have your second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is the, again, to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, this is letter of support for the Virginia Telecommunication Initiative 2020 through the Cumberland Plateau Planning District Regional Application. This is the vader support to the application submitted to the Cumberland Plateau Planning District for Bacannon, Dixon, Russell, and Tassell Counties in partnership with Point Broadband, project known as the Cumberland Plateau Planning, uh, broadband expansion project. Will allow Bacannon, Dixon, and Russell and Tassell Counties to install a state-of-the-art fiber optic that will serve multiple communities of need. The project will serve the schools, vocational training facilities, businesses, healthcare facilities, state agency, and most importantly, will offer gigabyte service to over 14,000 addresses previously underserved. As I, as we understand it, the goal of the VDA to create a strong competitive communities throughout the Commonwealth by preparing those communities to build, utilize, and capitalize on the telecommunication infrastructure. This project is an initiative, is an initiative regional collaboration that will help the Commonwealth to achieve the goals. The Russell County Board Supervisors strongly supports Cumberland Plateau Planning District, Virginia Telecommunication Initiative 2020 grant application, and looks forward to the benefits it will bring to our community. Motion of support.
All right, we have a motion to send this letter of support for the Cumberland Plateau Planning District.
Somebody, Madam Chair.
Second.
Lou, all right, all those in favor?
Uh.
Anyone opposed?
I'll need to abstain. Madam Chair, that concludes the County Ministerial Reports and Requests.
All right. Do you have any other things for the board, or do you have anything else to say? That's David. Steve?
One thing, I, I think it's been apparent during this COVID issue that we don't know what businesses are out there. We've talked about this, and, and I think it's time we get a business license of some sort. And I'm not talking about a big monetary thing, I think it's mostly just to identify who's out there and what they do, and I'd like to, like to see us start working on that, just a business license, it could be a dollar, five dollars, whatever, but we need to identify who's out there, what they're doing, and, and keep a list of it, so that we can make, you know, for, you know, industry's aware of who's out there and what kind of services they've got, not to mention, you know, being able to send out letters to existing businesses, and just being able to track work. That's all I.
Lou?
No, I don't have anything, but I'll echo what Cindy said, I keep saying that, that I, I don't know that we can do that as a county, so there may be some stipulations in the area as far as business licensing, but it would be nice to have a true directory of something that shows us who's doing business, where they're doing business, out of their home, their garage, a brick and mortar in the downtown area. So I think this is vital information, but I don't know how you get it. Thank you.
Katie, Katie, would you look and see whether or not we can actually get a business license?
Yeah, I'll look at that.
Thank you.
Carl?
No, Madam Chair.
Tim?
No, ma'am.
Okay, with that being said, the next thing we have is a adjournment, and I think Tim, you want to suggest you may take a train.
I just want to ask if everybody would want to move their reading to September 8th because the 7th is Labor Day.
I have it on the 8th instead of the 7th.
That would be a Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
That'd be a Tuesday.
Make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
And, and.
I'll stay with you.
You might need to make a.
I'll stay with it.
Okay, well, wait, Tim, you're going to do it at five here for executive session?
Five for executive session and six for regular meeting.
All right, so Tim and David, you second it?
I'll second that.
All right, everybody in favor?
Uh.
So we will do, have our adjournment, we will meet at 10:00 AM, 5 o'clock, executive session.
I'll make a place with a jumper.
David, adjourn?
I'm ready.
Well, he just, he just had to say that.
I'm awoken.
Okay, Tim, you're going to say the third one for him?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, we adjourn?
Uh.
All right, we'll see you. Bye, Tim. If you are, David.